Yeah, you guys are gonna be down in the twenties Friday night.
Yeah.
That'll do in the rest of the plants.
Yes, it will.
I still have a couple pepper plants that are alive.
Well, you better get the peppers off them if there's any left.
There are. I've covered them a couple of times, but not worth it anymore.
No, they sense when it's time.
Mother Nature tells them to.
Oh, sure does.
I was planning to power wash the back of my house. I did three sides so about a month ago or so and I, my power washer crapped out, so I borrowed a neighbor's. And I wasn't doing it on Friday, but not as cold as it's gonna be. I don't want any ice on the house.
No, it'll warm up again.
How many will it take you to drive to Florida?
If we were to drive straight through, which we're not, we're gonna stop and see friends along the way. I think it's 23 hours.
Yeah, I did two stops, so two nights, and then on to Florida.
Yeah, I mean, that's easy enough to do, and that's about what we're gonna do. We're gonna stop in North Carolina and then we're gonna stop again in South Carolina, excuse me, Georgia, and then from there it's only about another eight hours.
Yeah.
Well, it's 6:30. I don't see anyone else that wants to be admitted to the meeting at this time. I have to keep an eye on that. So a little added responsibility tonight. All right, I called a meeting, meeting number 1789 of the Planning and Zoning Commission at 6:31 PM. We have a quorum, myself, Commissioner Sullivan, Jim Thurs, McCloskey, is Tim Moore in the audience? No, Tim. Okay, in accordance to my notes, Frank, I have you up as a possible voting member tonight. Is that okay with you?
That's fine. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Dick, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, I would, I would like to thank everyone for your more than kind wishes that I received about eight or nine days ago, and I couldn't be more grateful for them. Serving on this board has been a very, very gratifying experience, especially for someone who did not know an awful lot about what the board does in the very beginning. And we do have a responsibility to the people of the town that most either do not understand or are not even aware that we do this. And to be thanked in the way I was thanked, I am more than grateful to all of you and believe me when I tell you it made my day. I want to thank you all very much.
Dick, I personally also want to thank you. I've learned quite a bit from you as well as each one of each, as well as each of the other commissioners. You've been a mentor to me and you've served the town great as well as this commission, and I wish you well and you're six months away from your home here.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Next up, legal notice. There is none. Mike, are there any added agenda items?
I don't have anything right now, nope.
Okay, so no. This is the public participation portion of our meeting. Are there any comments in the audience for something that's not already on tonight's agenda? I don't see anyone raising their hand or wanting to speak. Next up, approval of minutes, September 22nd, 2020. Does anyone have any comments, edits? Anything to talk about regarding the meeting, excuse me, the minutes?
I have nothing, Joe.
I read them and they're okay with me.
Well, if there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Okay, excuse me, I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of meeting number 1788 on September 22nd as presented.
There's a motion by Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dick. Any comments? Here are none. A call for vote. Those in favor, raise their hand. Aye.
Aye.
And I see five. Thank you. Motion passes. Next up, receipt of applications. I don't have any. No continued public hearings or new public hearings. We'll move right into new business. The Silverman Group Site Plan Modification, Construction of 150,000 square foot and 50,000 square foot future addition for a warehouse distributions building at 12 South Main Street. Deadline for decision, December 31st, 2020. And I think I saw Tim Kuhn here on the call. He's somewhere.
Good evening. I am here tonight representing the Silverman Group for a site plan modification at the site at 12 South Main Street. This site encompasses four parcels which extend from South Main Street up to Wagner Lane, out to South Water Street, and the very frontage is on B1 and the majority of the site is on M1. It consists of 22.2 acres. I'm sure you're all familiar with it because we were here first in February of 2019 and received the site plan approval for Sardili Produce for Warehouse Manufacturing Facility for Sardili, which included also maintenance of their fleet of trucks. We then returned in June of 2020 with the Silverman Group, and we got a modification for a multi-tenant warehouse and distribution facility. This modification included two buildings, 80 loading docks, 51 truck spaces, 302 employee spaces, which was down from 372 for the Sardili application. It did eliminate the onsite maintenance facility for the truck fleets and fueling. It was really a less intense use than what Sardili was proposing and less traffic congestion as well. And we were approved for that site modification near the end of June, and the project is actually under construction. Over that project, they got approved on spec and have started construction on spec, but subsequently the Silverman Group has been approached by a single tenant user who's interested in using the site. The same use, warehouse and distribution. I do have revised site plans tonight. If you'd like, I could share my screen so that we could go through them, or I could just drive it through you, whatever you'd like.
Yeah, Tim, you can share your screen, no problem.
Let me get, pull up the plan here. It's telling me host disabled participant screen sharing, so I think you gotta do something to let me share my screen.
It should be all set now.
Okay. Okay. Now I just gotta find the right one. So hopefully you can see the overall site plans on the screen. What is being proposed, as I said, is a single tenant user. The changes to the plans from the previous approved site plan modification is we're going from two buildings to one. There will be a reduction in the area, building area from 246,240 down to 200,000 square feet, which will be built in two phases, the 150,000 initial project and then a 50,000 square foot addition. There's a reduction in employee parking from 301 spaces to 141 spaces, and I'm just gonna flash back. This was the previous plan that was approved, the modification with the two buildings. There was parking all along both the east and west sides. There was truck parking to the east as well as the west, and the loading dock areas where there were 80 loading docks in between the buildings. This is what is being proposed now. As I mentioned, the single building, we're able to put our employee parking down near the site entrance, so we've eliminated quite a bit of parking around the building. We are down now to 10 loading docks from what was 80 before, and we've ended up with a reduction in impervious coverage of about three and a half acres from the previous approved plan. We've eliminated all the truck parking and activity that was previously proposed over here in the southeast corner, which is nearest the residence along South Water Street. What we've added here to the west of the building is a storage yard. Outdoor storage is an approved, or I'm sorry, is a permitted accessory use in this M1 zone. So there is an area here which will be fenced, that will be screened. The screening consists of the existing berms which were previously shown on the prior approved plans. Fortunately, we have been able to enlarge these berms. What were four-foot-high berms before, we have now increased to eight-foot-high berms to provide additional screening. And we will still maintain the original plantings on those berms which were double rows of evergreen trees all the way around in order to screen the site. So now our screening has improved. We are also providing, there will be, and it doesn't show on this plan, but I could show it, there's on the south end of the loading area here, we're also putting a row of arborvitae's to help screen the south end in addition. There were some, obviously with the revised layout, there's some revisions to the landscape plan to accommodate the new layout on the interior. We have revised the site lighting, and we've provided a photometric plan that demonstrates compliance with the regulations in that aspect. We've obviously revised the drainage and the utilities for this new layout as well. We did also add a sidewalk. Now, we're proposing a sidewalk between the two exits out on the South Water Street, which will run along our frontage on South Water Street. So that's in addition to the plan as well. We are maintaining the previously approved access and internal circulation of the site, and by that I mean we have a single entrance only off of Route 5 over here to the west where we have our frontage on Route 5. That'll be an entrance only. We will again split the employee traffic and car traffic to go into the parking lot, and they will have their own exit driveway that comes around the building and comes out onto South Water Street at this location. The trucks will be directed to the south where they will come down, have access to the storage yard, and then they will have a truck-only exit out on the South Water Street down at the southern end of the site. Now, this was the same configuration as the previously approved plans for both Sardili and the past modification, and just a reminder that the reason we went with this particular design with our exits out on the South Water Street is because of the heavy traffic volume at our Route 5 frontage as well as the fact that right in front of our site is where the two southbound lanes merge into one. So there's heavy traffic there, there's a merging of lanes, and everyone involved decided that it was better designed to have the traffic exit out on the South Water Street where they could head back to Route 5 and utilize the existing intersection, which is signalized at Route 5 and South Water Street. That concept was part of the application to OSTA, Office of State Traffic Administration, and they did review and approve that as part of the Sardili application. And none of those improvements have changed at the intersection. Those are all still part of this plan. The one thing we did add at the request of the local traffic authority is, I'm gonna see if I can pan over here a little bit. Maybe I can't. I'm having trouble. Anyway, at the entrance, we have added a designated right turn lane in from the southbound lane. And that we have added, there's an additional sheet in the plan set again, and that was added at the request of the chief of police and the local traffic authority at the entrance. We, in addition to the plan set, we did provide a trip generation comparison, which was prepared by Bubber Traffic Associates comparing this new application to the previously approved modification. And just to summarize that the change, the modification is approximate reduction of about 25% in the peak traffic generation from the site. This was approved by the town engineer. He received a memo that said, "Yes, no issues." We'll see a few comments from Mike, and we believe we've addressed those to his satisfaction. And just in conclusion, that this modification to a single user is a further reduction in the intensity of what has previously been approved at this site, and the reduction in the intensity and the potential impacts, and we do believe that the plans meet all of your site plan criteria, and we would approve the plan this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Jan.
Thank you, Tim, for the presentation. Did you cover all the items on Mike D'Amato's memo regarding some of the concerns that he had? Did you go? I heard you touch on a few of them, but did you go over all of them?
I can do that now.
Thank you.
With regard to, I have a copy of my responses to his comments dated October 26th, 2020, which you probably have. But Mike's comments with regard to his plan comments, his first one was regard to the requirement for shade trees at 50-foot intervals around the perimeter of the site, along the site frontage. And my response to that was is that we were essentially providing, actually here, I may go down just to show you the landscape plan here. If I can get to it. Once it comes up. There it is. That, here's our landscape plan. And my response to Mike's comment here was that we have provided, to substitute if you will, for those shade trees, we're providing 181 evergreen trees on our berm, on the, along our frontage here. We are providing street trees out at this frontage, but on our other frontage, we're essentially, rather than the shade trees, because we have a requirement for screening, we're essentially substituting those shade trees with evergreen trees. Okay? His second comment was to add some more landscaping in the islands, and I did comment that I noticed that there were some end islands that we could add some additional plantings to, to address that comment. Third comment was requiring an eight instinct reinforced concrete pad in the loading areas, and I agreed that on the final plans in these loading areas at the rear of the building, we would be adding concrete slabs where the loading docks are, to address that. His fourth comment was the, just I guess a question or requirement regarding loading spaces be provided for all tenants, and I just pointed out that this will be a single tenant user, and this addition will also be used by the single tenant. So there are ample loading spaces to meet their needs. Okay. And then with regard to his general comments, he did mention a outdoor storage height, and he just confirmed that for the industrial use, the allowable maximum height for outdoor storage is 25 feet. And the other final comment was regarding that the parcels needed to be merged, and I pointed out that that was part of the initial plan to merge the parcels, and that actually has been completed. And I provided Mike with a copy of the merger deed. So those were Mike's comments and our responses to them.
Thank you, Tim. Mike, do you have any preliminary, or you have any response to what Tim is saying? Are you okay with with his answers?
Yeah, so I got, we got that response yesterday, and we went through it, and I spoke with, spoke with him on the phone, and we went through everything. So I think that, you know, regarding the shade trees, it's probably more appropriate that they put those efforts into the buffering and to the berm because of the, you know, the adjacent property uses, so I think that was appropriate. The other revisions he's gonna incorporate into the final plan, so that I don't have any problems with that. And the outdoor storage comment was based on the fact that when we, when I did the planned review, we didn't yet know what the outdoor storage was going to entail, and our regs, as you know, contemplate certain uses are allowed via permit and others are special permits, so I wanted to make sure that the dialogue that he just got into, got into the record. And the merge is fine. So to the extent that these comments, I feel they address everything that's been communicated.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go around and ask fellow commissioners if they have any comments for Tim. And I'll start with you. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, at the time of the prior proposal that we approved, the tenant was unknown. It appears the tenant is known now. And I'm wondering what the outdoor storage area will hold, and if it's 25 feet tall and it was something like dirt piles, it could be blowing dust issues. So I'm wondering if we could get a little bit more information about what's envisioned for the outdoor storage.
Sure. This will be building material storage, so lumber and that type of deal.
Okay, like on pallets or in some way, so it wouldn't blow around?
Correct.
And if it's 25 feet tall, will it be visible to the butters at the rear of the property?
With the eight-foot-high berms and the evergreen trees, I would say probably not unless, except maybe from the second story, but I don't know how you can screen something from the second store.
All I have for questions. Thanks, Joe.
Mike, you're up.
Okay, Tim, so the proposed expansion, do you have an idea timeframe-wise when they plan on adding the expansion?
I do not. I don't know if Dan Lass is on this phone or on the meeting he made, or may not be. I don't know if I saw his name earlier, but if he is, perhaps he could respond to this. Dan, are you there?
I'm here.
Do you know anything about timeframe with regard to the future addition?
No, there's no scheduled hard date for the addition. It's there for future expansion purposes, but it's not tied to a specific calendar date.
Dick, can you just kindly identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Dan Lacy, L-A-C-Z, 195 Marstown Road, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, VP with the Silverman Group and the applicant for this project.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Tim, so then kind of going to my next part of the question is, what is that area where the future expansion, how is that going to be finished? Is that gonna be loomed, seeded? Are you putting any preliminary footings in there? What's that area gonna look like?
I believe that'll simply be loomed and seeded until they decide to proceed with the addition.
Okay. I don't see on this drawing, where do you plan on putting dumpster and screening?
Okay, let me go back. The dumpsters will actually be within the loading area, so it'll be screens by the perimeter screening. I'm trying to get to my layout plan here where I can show you where we should have the dumpsters. Let's see. All right. Not that one. Okay, this one. This plan shows the areas behind the building. This is in the loading area. There's gonna be a couple of ramps that go up into the building at floor level. These will be depressed loading docks, and adjacent to the loading docks, we have areas for dumpsters.
Okay. The, so the storage area, that's all gonna be paved. No snow plowing? Do you have adequate space where it's all gonna get pushed off to?
Yes, if there's, you know, if they have to take and remove it by bucket out of the storage area, you know, it'll depend on how they set up their storage area, but if it has to be removed, there's ample lawn area where they can stockpile it till it's not.
Okay. I think that's all I have at this moment, Joe.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Jim?
You mentioned lumber. I assume you're not gonna have any more refrigerated trucks going in and out?
Yeah, no, the refrigerated trucks, I believe that was part of the Sardili application because they dealt with produce. Yeah, this is building material storage, so I don't anticipate refrigerated trucks.
Okay, so they won't be running all day like they thought before, which is good. Okay, that's all I have.
Dick?
Yes, I'd like to know the hours and the nature of the operation on a day-to-day basis.
I would have to defer to Dan on the hours, but as we mentioned, the use is a warehouse and distribution center for building materials.
Is this going to be open to the general public or just contractors, or is it just the shipping and receiving area for tractor-trailer?
I can address that, Tim. This is Dan Lacy with the Silverman Group. It is, it's open to customers but not the general public. It's more of a commercial-grade operation, and then part of the business is, you know, obviously the shipping and receiving, an inventory of the product for their customers, but it's not a retail store.
Okay, and hours of operation are roughly?
Two primary shifts and then skeleton crew overnight, but not truly operating. You know, it is, it is 24/7 per the zoning, but not a full true shift overnight.
Okay, is there going to be manufacturer, manufacturer of lumber, in other words, cutting, sawing, stapling, nailing, whatever?
No, there's no manufacturing.
That's all I have at the moment, Joe.
Okay, Frank?
All my questions have been answered. I have no questions.
All right. I have a few. Tim, with the higher berms, the four to eight feet, are there any concerns regarding sightlines? Particularly the Easterly Drive or, I don't know, the subtly drive on South Water Street? Is that going to impact sight distance?
Now, we've set these berms back so that they do not interfere with the sight lines. As you can see, actually, on this, this berm, this, all this open space here is to accommodate the sight line from this driveway looking to the south. So we took that into consideration when we placed these berms.
And how about that other driveway just to the south?
Same.
Same thing.
Yeah, the berms don't interfere with the sight line.
Although I'm not opposed, I'm kind of curious why the local traffic authority asked for a right turn lane on Route 5 at the site driveway. Do you know the history behind that?
I don't know all the specifics because Jim Buberis, our traffic consultant, was dealing with the chief. But I believe it had to do with a recent report that came out which said there had been, I guess, a significant number of accidents near our site driveway where that merger takes place, just in front of our drive. They had a concern about if we've got tractor-trailers pulling in here and turning right, that that would just add to the congestion at that location. And they felt that if we put in a designated right turn lane, that would help alleviate the problem.
Okay. So one of my questions was answered regarding what the material could be in the outdoor storage yard. So we're understanding it could be lumber. So does that mean there could be forklifts driving around or moving lumber around different times of the day? Is it that type of lumber? Where the lumber would be out there for a period of time? I guess really what I'm getting at, is there going to be any excessive noise coming from the back of the facility? I understand it's a permitted use and it's kind of to get a better handle on. Inside the warehouse, no one's going to hear it, but outside, outside activities other than motor vehicles, could there be any other noise?
I think I'm going to have to defer to Dan on that because he's more familiar with the proposed operation than I am.
Yeah, no problem. Yes, there will be obviously material handling outside with lulls and forklifts. But, you know, in a lot of cases, those are quieter than, you know, your truck traffic and deliveries. But there is going to be movement within that yard for handling of materials.
Okay, thank you. Tim, I noticed on the plans that there is an emergency access driveway to Wagner Lane.
Yes.
I'm kind of curious as to why is that gravel?
Because if, we didn't want to invite that to be a regular means of ingress and egress. And we felt that the gravel could meet the requirements for emergency, for supporting emergency vehicles. So we left it as gravel and that seemed to satisfy the fire chief who requested that entrance.
I'm not opposed to that. It's just difficult though, you know, emergency access driveway, difficult to plow with snow on it. I mean, it's not impossible.
Yeah. No.
Yeah, I would thought that the gate there, that would be a deterrent from people trying to access the site, regardless of the material of the driveway. And my last question is, what would be the scenario where the, where, how the future expansion would take place? You've already made it clear that this is a single tenant user. Would that be because there's demand for more storage? The successful business where you're just keeping it, you have room on the site and why not?
Dan?
Yeah, the future expansion is built in for the future plans of the company. You know, projecting more indoor storage versus outdoor. So it's built in future anticipated capacity for the same tenant.
Thanks. Mike D'Amato, I'm going to circle back with you. Anything else come to mind regarding from a staff, planning, zoning staff perspective?
So we dropped in the file here as we've been getting them. We did get a memo from WPCA, which just for those who are listening, basically if there's going to be a change to the conveyance, they're going to need a new application with WPCA. We got a response back from the town engineer and he has no issues with the proposal. We don't yet have something from fire. So it's been sent, but we don't have those comments back yet, which is part of the reason why you don't have any suggested motions from us at this point. Because I think we would want to hear from them, particularly because given this large layout of the yard, we want to make sure that they're comfortable, that they have the access that they need from a fire and safety perspective. The other thing that they provided, and Tim may have touched on this, is trip generation comparison, which was also included for you guys. And I know we touched on the photometric. So from my perspective, some of the other questions that I had regarding the operation of the yard were answered. And whether or not that was going to be predominantly vehicle traffic or forklift traffic. And some of the other logistics have kind of been fleshed out in their presentation. So at this point, I would just kind of hold to see what we get from fire.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board?
Yes, I have one, Joe.
Sure.
With the outdoor forklift traffic, is it conceivable that that could be operating, say, for example, at 10 o'clock at night or 4 o'clock in the morning? And these would all have backup alarms, correct?
Correct, they do. They do have backup alarms.
And could they be operating at the hours that I mentioned? So let's say, for example, 10 o'clock at night or 4 o'clock in the morning?
Yes, we are not asking for any operation restrictions per the use ordinance, but it's highly unlikely that material will be shifting around using that material at those hours. That would happen during the day.
Okay.
Yeah, unlikely.
Any other questions from the board?
Joe, I was going to have a similar, in that same line of thought was, will they be receiving deliveries in off-hours also?
Yes, that is feasible.
There may be some overnight deliveries coming in.
Correct. Again, primarily it's a two-shift operation and deliveries and unloading will happen during the two conventional shifts, but we can't be restricted on an overnight delivery.
I would just like to point out that the prior approvals also had similar situations where, and probably more intense and more likely to have overnight deliveries.
Any final comments from the board or Tim?
I don't have anything to add unless there are any more questions.
Joe, this is Anne. I know from what Jason has told us that the neighbors were very concerned just because they had no input and had no knowledge of what was going on. I'm wondering if the applicant has had any conversations with the neighbors to help them understand what's going on.
Yes, the concerns of the neighbors were brought to our attention. You know, obviously, we did purchase this from Sardili, which is a larger operation. And we kind of inherited curb cuts that were approved and reviewed by both the local traffic and the OSTA agencies. We were asked to increase the berms, which we did as a good neighbor. And, you know, if we can accommodate even a little higher, we're happy to do that. We increased the landscaping and also included a sidewalk, which was requested by the concerned party. So the things that we were able to do at our cost, I instructed Tim to include on the plan. Other concerns with respect to driveway location, sight distance and things like that, I was not able to redesign and accommodate due to engineering and OSTA approvals.
So you're confirming you've been talking to, I'll say, the butters?
Yes, through various channels, the concerns were brought to our attention. And we did instruct Tim to make any accommodation we can on the plan that they requested.
And the butters, the information that this is, I'll say lumber building supply type operation has been shared?
I did not share that information. We were just asked to increase the berms and sidewalk spaces on the larger project approval.
So, Tim, for the reasons that Mike D'Amato mentioned, I guess we're going to plan to take action at our next meeting. We don't have a staff memo with proposed conditions of approval and those things. Are you going to have an opportunity to revise your final plans before our next meeting? There's a couple elements that, you know, we touched upon that you said you would get to.
We can certainly do that and provide revised plans. I'll, hopefully, we receive any comments from the fire departments in a quick order so that I could add those as well if anything is required.
Yeah, Tim, if you could just touch base with me before you, I don't, as much as I love plans, getting another couple of trees worth of paper in our office, if we can avoid it, I'd love to. So just touch base with me first before you go to print and we'll figure out what we need. And I'll make sure that we rally around getting comments so you can do the revision once, so we don't have multiple versions. So just touch base beforehand.
No problem. I will do that.
So we're going to continue this application to our next meeting, but are there any final comments for Tim? Okay, here are none. I'll entertain a motion to continue the application to our next meeting, which is December, no, November. November what date here? Let me, on the calendar, November 10th.
Yeah, I make a motion that we postpone or defer the site.
Continue the application.
Thank you. I make a motion that we continue the application for site plan modification by the Silverman Group for a 150,000 square foot and 50,000 square foot future addition warehouse distribution building at 12 South Main Street until our next meeting, which was November, what did you say, 12?
10.
November 10th.
There's a motion on the table to continue the application November 10th. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Any discussion? I call for all who's in favor, say aye or raise their hand. Aye? Aye, I see consensus. I see five. All right. Thanks, Tim. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Yes, have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Next up, under Old Business Warehouse Point Planning Study, include Terry Han of L A D A P C Land Planners. I thought I saw Terry.
Yep, she's there.
Terry, are you around? Well, she's not here, so why don't we, why don't we, I'll entertain a motion to go out of order and we'll consider the other business first. So can I have a motion to go to item seven on the agenda? Other Business Informal Discussion Regarding Quarry Meadows Include Merrick Kemet.
I'll make the motion. Go ahead, Joe. Go ahead, Mike. Go, you go. You go, but you go.
Okay, I make the motion that we go out of order to move on to item number seven, Other Business, and defer later to Old Business.
There's a motion on the table to go out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise their hand. Aye?
Aye.
I see five hands. All right, we're going out of order. Other Business Informal Discussion Regarding Quarry Meadows Include Merrick Kemet. Merrick, the floor is yours.
Thank you and hello, everyone. It's been a long time.
Welcome to the club.
Right?
Right.
For the record, Merrick Kemet, I am here tonight representing myself as well as my family for the Quarry Meadows subdivision. This is just an informal discussion, just to get some comments, feedback before we actually do make a formal application. We didn't want to fly inside you. I just wanted to see how this lays out and then just to get, like I said, your feedback. Can we share the screen here? Possibly?
I may be sharing the screen. I want to give controls to you here. Hold on. That's not working out great. No. Okay, can you, is it working?
Can you see that?
No, Joe, we're looking at your screen.
Oh, boy.
Looks like you're swimming in Hawaii.
All right. This is what happens. You got a novice here.
We have, you're both sharing screens, so Joe, if you push stop sharing, Merrick is also sharing. So you should be okay.
I got to find my stop sharing button here.
At the top of the screen. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, please bear with me here.
Merrick, try now.
Can you see that? That? Nothing?
Nothing.
Do you, I mean, I can bring it up. There we go.
Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, here we go. All right, so you see the subdivision, right? All right. All right, so this was Quarry Meadows subdivision. This was approved back in 2006. We're looking at 48 lots that were developed in the R3 zone immediately following approval. We have been in the core system for many years, which just finally resolved last year for some appealing tax issues. So we were trying to move forward on this development. Since that time, as you know, in '07 and '08, we had the economic downturn. The market crashed. It really hasn't bounced back. So in that time, we had also started some construction on its development, some of the infrastructure is in, which includes a storm drainage, the gravity sewer is also in. The remaining items is the pump station, which pumps from the intersection of Quarry Road and Depot Street all the way up to Skinner Road and as well as paving, which is still to remain to be done. So since that time, 13 years has passed since the original approval, we, and we're out of the core system, we're trying to figure out what's the next step for this development. So we did try to market this property. We went to many developers and everyone is saying the same thing, it's just not economically feasible in today's world. So we're trying to find a solution on what we can do with this property. And one of the solutions, or actually the only solution, is to increase the density of this development over this site to include more houses so we can make it more economically feasible for, you know, due to the construction costs. So with that, after reviewing So with that, after reviewing the the regulations, the the one regulation or the one zone that actually fit best was if moving to a zone changed to the multifamily development zone. This zone would allow for an increase in density. Originally, the R three, the density was one unit per acre in the M F D D zone. It is two up to a maximum of four units per acre. The property is serviced by public water and city sewer. And, you know, with the city sewer, that would be involved with that pump station to Skinner Road. But the only challenge that we see with that one is how it is affecting with the P O C D. The P O C D regulates that zone as for a not to be used in in a rural area. But we do have other developments in town, like the mansions on Canyon Ridge next to my family's construction company, which is also an M F D D as well as Scannick Glen, which is condominiums, which is also in a rural area. So we feel that a precedent has been set. So this is no different than one of those developments. So let me let me walk you through my vision. You can see what was designed. And what I created was to do something in color. Does that show up?
Yes.
It's there. Okay. So what I present to you is the village quarry metals. This is going to be a condominium complex. Basically, the design efforts that I put into this was utilizing the existing street layout that was originally approved from the subdivision back in oh six. The reason for that is is mainly because of the infrastructure. Infrastructure is already in place. We have a water line that services right through that property. It's going through Cal Myers's piece to the other development on East Road. So there's really no other alternative to to changing the road layout. The homes that I'm proposing here are all detached units. There's not going to be duplexes. There's not going to be buildings like the mansions. Nothing's connected. They're all single family detached units. The vision is, you know, does something similar like this. I just picked something real quick. I didn't want to spend too much time on it. But they're all going to be two car garages, maybe around fourteen to sixteen hundred square feet, two to three bedroom units. And that's what's presented in in front of you. The detached units, I envisioned, because I wanted to keep it in that rural atmosphere to keep it back, you know, per the P O C D, try to keep it in that same type of context, the same neighborhood. That's what that's we have already in a surrounding area. So to eliminate that duplex or a threeplex, you know, bigger buildings. I also created a rotary. You can see that near Depot Street. The purpose of that rotary is to actually screen the development from Depot Street. So as you're driving by, you won't be looking down that entire alleyway into the development. If you're familiar with the site now, you probably drive by and you actually can see right in the gravel pit right now. And you can see the the vast opening that's in there. So this was catered to actually screen the development for the future. One other item was we are creating an emergency access road, which is off of Sullivan Farm Road. We do not want to turn that into a throughway that is going to be gated. So it's going to be very similar to what the mansions have off of the Oski Road. So it's not going to be utilized. It's not going to be a cut through through the development to get out the east road for anybody. The main travel road is going to be what I'm calling right now Red Rock Run out the depot street. So Sullivan Farm Road is not going to be a throughway. It's not perceived that way. So we don't want that traffic going into that neighborhood, which which we know that will be a concern if we do move forward with this development. Somebody amenities that we're including in this, I don't know if I can. That zoom in. What we're proposing here is a clubhouse with with a pool. We're probably going to have a playscape, a dog park, a couple courts, whether tennis or volleyball. There's also access to Broadbrook Stream. Which is down in this lower corner. And we're also, there's about, you know, over two miles of sidewalks and recreational trails throughout the development. We're proposing a recreational trail around the perimeter of the entire development. You know, for the recreation purposes. We did have a preliminary meeting with town staff, which included Len Norton. We did receive a promising reaction of Mr. Norton did comment on, you know, we did like the development based on the fact that it wasn't a town road. There's no maintenance involved on a townsend. Because this will be a private community, which for all intents purposes, the the maintenance and the lawn care and everything will be will be all private. So as I said, I'm just presenting this to you informally. I didn't want to, you know, have Darren Headlights kind of effectively presented something without having some, you know, little insight and and look into it. And hopefully you can give me some comments, feedback, and and we can take it from there. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dick. You can lead us off here.
A number of building units, Merrick.
Uh, actually, what I did was I I just threw in something just to make it aesthetically pleasing. I didn't try to overpower everything. So what's shown is a hundred and fifty six units per density. If I use the entire track, which I think Mike will disagree with me using the the piece in Ellington. We were allowed up to two hundred and four units. At the minimum, we could have eighty eight units. So I didn't want to spend too much time if we weren't going to move forward. So I tried to throw something to to see if it would work. And that's what I'm presenting to you. And and obviously, this is not set in stone. This is just diagrammatic to to get the ball rolling.
No, I'm just looking at looking at this and the fact that the exit is out onto Depot Street and how much how much of a daily rush hour traffic that that sort of thing is going to create on Depot.
Yeah, obviously, we're going to have to go through a traffic study. Most likely, the traffic will will be split between going into Ellington and into East Windsor. But that's going to be outcome of the traffic study, which will be required as part of the regulations for this development.
And these are two and three bedroom homes?
Yeah, the the regulations allow two to three bedroom homes. There's a percentage of what how many three bedrooms I think you can have per the development, but that would all be factored in. And all I did, you know, for this purpose was I just took a foundation plan, which is the one I showed you. And, you know, I just cut and pasted it, put it all over the place. So some of them might be a little bit differently designed when we get down that road, but we didn't want to get into an architectural contract yet if we can't move forward.
Fun with stickers.
Pretty. Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, those are the only questions that I have at the moment.
Merrick, I have a question.
Yes.
You said there's access to the Broadbrook Stream. The Broadbrook Stream is an organization that leases all that land. And it's a fishing club. And if you don't belong to the fishing club, you can't fish there.
Yeah, that that would be something I guess we'll have to look at, Frank. I do know that that Broadbrook Stream does run through the property. So we do have ownership rights to that stream. But as far as other people, like I, I don't know how far that would go. We can look into that, definitely.
Thank you.
Jim, comments?
Yeah, I I think it's a great idea for a blank piece of property that's been empty for how many years? Fifteen years, thirteen, fourteen years?
Yeah, yes.
Is this, was this the property where they dug too deep and we couldn't get the septic in?
That's correct. And that's why we went for the sewer. And what happened is when we got to the sewer, you know, we got in just in time before the avoiding the area. So we were kind of grandfathering for a sewer in this location.
I mean, I I think it looks great. I mean, you got tennis courts, you got you got all sorts of things over there to do. People are going to love that. Traffic doesn't, like you say, can do traffic today. There's not much traffic cutting through there already. I think it's a great idea.
If I might add, Merrick, I think it's a great idea, too. I think you obviously have to do some tweaking and to get to get everybody happy, but I I I think it's it's a great idea.
Yeah, that definitely does a work in progress here. I I had to start somewhere and that's why I wanted to present it to you guys informally. As you know, I I was on the board before, so I know what it's like to get that sticker shock, so.
At least it won't be a solar field.
Well, we looked into that, too.
Mike, you're up.
Okay, are you proposing any kind of age restriction in this community?
No, this is not an age restricted community. This is going to be just for anybody. This condos.
So this this could calculate into the increase in in our our school demands here, adding these many additional houses. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was just going to agree with you.
Are you planning to do?
Excuse me. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Merrick, are you planning on doing this in phases at all? Or is it going to be one complete development?
It's going to be one complete development. However, there are going to be phases for building them. You can't build them all at once. The projection is to do, I believe, ten to fifteen units a year kind of deal. It's not going to happen all at once.
And will the amenities be at the beginning or at the end of the project?
I I don't know really the process of that. This is kind of more new territory for me. But I would imagine it would be probably after like one third of the units are built, something like that. I think after doing a little bit of research on it, you don't build them all up front. So you have to wait till you get some units to pay for that and have that usage.
Okay. Any of this going to be considered affordable housing?
No, we didn't want to go down that road.
Okay. That's what I have for now, Joe. Thank you.
I have a comment on on the school kids as I remember when this, when the Scannick Ridge was going in. I was concerned about the number of kids going to school and after it was completed and it was filled up, there was only three. I could not believe it. It was only three students that would get into our public school system.
And to mention on that, Frank, I graduated with like eighty seven kids. My son graduated last year and he there's like seventy one kids in the in the grade. So it hasn't changed too much in thirty five years.
I think that the mansions at Canyon Canyon Ridge is under three.
Yeah.
And it ended the second highest taxpayer, I believe.
Right.
Maybe we'll be the first.
Ian.
But but you can see that, you know, I wanted to do the detached units. I didn't want to have that monstrosity of the buildings out there. It just it didn't fit with this area. So that's why we're going detached. And I would definitely go forward, make that as a condition of any approval.
I like that idea very much.
Ian, you're up.
I like the detached units. And when I look at the plan, again, I'm looking at it just image on the screen and I can't tell distance at all. But if I was living in one of the units where my back deck was that close to the person behind me, it would just feel tight.
Yeah, between the just as I'm showing, it's about seventy feet between the buildings right now. So if you had a ten foot deck or a patio back there, yeah, you're you're about, you know, forty feet or so between the neighbors. And it's going to be planned things. Obviously, we're going to have some shrubbery out there.
And and that's also if there's that many units going in. I mean, you're you showing how many here or?
That that's true, too, Frank. Yeah, it does. This is a hundred and fifty six units. Like I said, I just threw it in there just to see what it would look like and see what we can come up with.
It looks tight to me without much open space left.
Well, definitely is aggressive. I won't I won't disagree there.
You got the recreational area, but I would feel, you know, back deck to back deck that it's close. Some of them have space, some don't.
I think probably if he has less units, it'll be more space, I would assume.
No, I that's kind of what I'm saying is if you compromise and have a few less units, it won't feel as tight. And maybe it wouldn't feel tight in.
Understood. And once, you know, we move forward and we understand the, you know, where we are with the density, then obviously we'll know where I need to be. But I just did rough calculations based on information that I had available.
Ian, anything else at this time?
No, that was my only reaction. I I mean, I like the architectural drawing of what a unit would look like.
Yeah, I wanted to keep it just like a a regular house. That's all. That's what it's going to be.
Now, your age, your regular house might be different at my my age.
Yeah, some people want one floor living.
This is true. And then possibly that would happen here, but I didn't really get into detail. And you know what? Something else I've I've, you know, looked into is that a lot of people really don't want to do the maintenance of their lawn anymore. They don't want to have to shovel their driveway. So this kind of a community, you're not doing it. You're having a maintenance and H O A who's going to take care of all that for you.
That's a great thing.
Merrick, I I also like the project. Most of my questions have been answered. I do have one thing I just throw out there for you. This is a private community. And I'm wondering how difficult it would be to keep nonresidents out of the recreational trails, using the tennis courts, using the clubhouse. How how would, because I I don't think this is going to be open to the general public.
That's correct. Yeah, that's that's a good question. That's something we'll have to think about and how to illuminate that part of it, but.
Joe, how they do that in Florida is it's fenced and you need to swipe a card or you get a key to open the gate. So that's how you keep them out of a pool in the tennis courts. I don't know how to keep them from walking on a path. You know, the sidewalk.
A gated community kind of style.
Yep.
With golf carts driving around? That'd be a good idea.
Mike Tomato, do you have anything? I know Merrick mentioned that he'd been coordinating with your office and others. You have anything to offer?
Um, so he, we did meet and he sent this over to me and and I did a preliminary sort of ten thousand foot view kind of review and I and I sent him over some notes. And, you know, to his point, he didn't want to dig in too much. If you guys decided this was kind of a square peg in a round hole. This, you know, I I think that what what strikes me about this project is that, number one, it makes use of a piece of property, which is is sort of underutilized but and had an approval. But also, you know, one of the things we're supposed to do is look at housing options. And this provides a housing option that is, you know, less traditional than what you might see. And, you know, these aren't massive homes that are going to be, you know, six hundred thousand dollars. And so you know, increasing housing options and and this the types of homes that might be available in East Windsor is is a good thing. There are a number, not a number, there are a few regulatory hurdles that he has to clear. The regs, like he said, him and I are a little bit off on what we think this parcel yields as far as the number of units. And there's some things that that need to be looked at in the the M F D D zone to to see if, you know, it can apply to this type of project in this location. There are a number of triggers in the regs that a project has to meet and a location has to meet for it to work. But I but he did not want to start going through all those things. You know, if you guys, until you guys have had the chance to look at it. So from my perspective, the next step for him will be to kind of look at what the regs allow and what that gives him. And if it makes sense, then proceed forward. And if it doesn't, we have to talk about what the plan B is. If there's tweaks that need to happen, that type of that type of thing.
Well, Merrick, I haven't heard any comments to the negative. Everyone seemed to be encouraging on the proposed project. Did you get what you hoped for from the board tonight?
I I actually did. And that's why I put it in color to make it look pretty. I did. And and, you know, I I do have a direction. And as Mike said, you know, now I have to kind of, you know, put the grind on and see what we can actually do for a density and and see what the yield is before we can move forward. But I did. I appreciate your time tonight and and thank you for all your feedback. I wrote everything down and and hopefully we can move forward on this. I think it's
I have a quick question.
Yes.
This is Tim Moore.
Hi, Tim.
Would hey, uh, would you consider doing different types of houses within the same community, like have a third be uh, two-family connected and then have a third be detached and maybe a third be single story? So we're drawing different demographics because I think I think it's a good idea. It's worked well in other towns, but I feel like if it had a mix of different people from the community, it made it that way.
Well, my vision was basically to do all detached units so it would fit with the characteristic of the neighborhood and and the setting out there. Uh, if the commission wants something different, we we can do that.
I just don't know if if it was mixed, it might look more like a neighborhood and less like a condominium. If there was some single story, some two-story, some detached, some attached.
Yeah, I don't think all the units are going to be the same. I just did this just to just to put it on paper. Um, but there's going to be probably some ranch styles, you know, it's two floors. Um, I would like to have all houses with two-car garages, so there's ample parking in a driveway. They're all going to have they're all going to have basements, so there's going to be storage for everyone, so that would, you know, satisfy.
Thanks, Tim. Any final comments for Merrick?
I have nothing at this point, Joe.
I'm all set.
I'm good.
Okay, Merrick, am I hearing anything else? So good luck to you.
All right.
See you soon.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is back to the regular order, uh, all business. Warehouse point planning study to include Terry Han of LEDA Land Planners. Oh, I guess we got to let you, uh, get us. Are you still sharing your screen, Merrick, or no?
No.
No, he's not. Okay. Hi, Terry.
Hey, how you doing? Sorry, guys. My computer froze just as you were calling my name, so I apologize. Um, how's everybody?
I I'm sure Merrick didn't mind that at all.
No, I'm sure he didn't either. That's right. Have your have your day close up early. That's not a problem. All right. So for the record, this is Terri Ann Han, principal of LEDA PC Land Planners. Um, we're talking this evening about the warehouse point planning and stormwater study um, that has been, um, in progress for quite some time. The, we are coming to the end of this, um, project. Uh, DECD, uh, we had a meeting with DECD and had to commit to a very specific schedule in order to get this finished. Um, they're they're concerned about, um, getting the funding closed up, you know, everything finished and getting their funding, um, uh, closed up and and, um, making sure that it's working. So we are going to be pushing, uh, pretty hard, uh, in terms of what we're doing next. So, um, we have a number of things to share with you this evening and show you how this is sort of all starting to come together. Um, and then go through what we're going to be doing for the next steps in order to finish up public participation, final report, um, which is planning to be submitted. Our our final presentation will be, um, our final public presentation will be your first meeting in December. And the final report needs to be submitted close to or right after December fifteenth. So we are, um, boring down on the end here. So, um, if it would be okay to share my screen, then, uh, I will do that. Okay, thank you. Okay, hang on. I gotta go back to the beginning here. I've lost my cursor. You're still here?
Yeah, I'm still here. Your screen is frozen on my set.
Yeah, it's it's frozen on mine as well. Okay. I cannot actually see you guys anymore, so let's see if I can escape out of this.
We can see you.
Oh, okay. The the camera is still active. Be careful of what you do. I got it. All right. Um, dear.
That will see all your animals cross by you soon.
Well, now she froze.
We'll give Terry a few minutes. No big deal.
When she gets back, I I can, I mean, I can share some stuff. Um, also, perhaps she can, if she turns off her camera, that will reduce her bandwidth demand and she can probably share some of these documents. Um, but I guess just to maybe fill some space. Um, she did submit and hopefully you guys got, um, the proposed schedule to complete. So just it it goes through each each, um, a meeting and the deliverables and what needs to happen. So um, yeah, DECD made it very clear, this is the deadline, right? These things must be done. So we put together, and by we, I mean Terry, she diligently put together what has to happen at each meeting and in between so that we can achieve that goal. Um, and and the reason for that is it requires some closeout on the state's end, so the town can get reimbursed, and so we need to have that time. Um, so that outline, hopefully you've you've taken a look at, and and so we'll be working through and making all of that happen. And I know I'm a little, uh, green on this because this is none of this has really happened while I've been around. But we're going to try to close everything out and get it taken care of and get the town reimbursed. Let me just make sure I don't have anything from her in my email.
Peg, do you need a break? We're, uh, you're going to substitute a break for this, uh, delay in action here.
This is fine. I'm great.
All right, thank you.
But thank you for asking. And what would you do, Joe, if I needed a break? Tell jokes to each other or what?
Oh, no, I'd I'd, uh, I'd ask for a break.
Okay.
And I put myself on mute and I can maybe eat my dinner. I think I see a new computer in Terry's future.
Little added pressure here for her.
She wants to come into the meeting. Let me admit her. Okay.
So let's see if she can keep her camera off so when she shares her screen.
Ah, she's back.
I am back. Sorry.
It's okay.
Not sure exactly what happened there. Um, it doesn't, it's usually very successful, so let me, um, I usually have no problems with Zoom at all. All right, let me see what I can find here. Okay. No, I think this is just my computer. I apologize. All right.
Terry, do you want me to share it from the what you sent over? If you just tell me what you want, I can pull it up.
Yes, that'd be great. That that would be fine. Thank you. Okay, so if we could start with the, um, uh, future land use plan.
Okay.
All right, so, um, just to sort of go through the process, uh, you're pulling these things off the, um, uh, the OneDrive? Is is that what you're doing?
Yeah, so I see one future use and density plan.
That's the that's the one. Yes, please. Let's start there.
Let me load it up. And maybe I'll have no issues here.
Yeah. Press our fingers.
Okay. I'm going to turn off my camera just so I don't have any bandwidth problems as long as I can, uh, share my screen. Screen two.
Maybe that's what my problem is. Okay.
Can you see?
Getting there. There we go. Okay. So if you recall, um, we started, uh, or we went through a long process to identify those areas that we wanted to, um, have additional development. Um, we identified uses that we thought were appropriate, those low particular locations. Um, and we, uh, put together this future use and density plan. From here, we started, uh, working on a series of site plans. Um, so before I go into those site plans, did anybody have any questions or thoughts or change their mind with respect to the future land use plan?
I do not. I don't know about anybody else.
I'm okay. Frank, this is Frank. I'm okay.
Okay. So this has become the foundation of where we have moved forward since then. So if you could, um, uh, pick up, uh, Mike on the, um, site plans, any of them will work. We'll just go through those various different site plans. We started with, uh, start with Bridge Street, uh, North Main, option one. Start there. That's perfect. Thank you. One of our initial focuses was at the, uh, Bridge Street, South Water Street, um, uh, intersection. And we put together a series of three different alternatives and plans to look at how that particular area might be developed as either, um, individual parcels or, uh, if we aggregate them and what we might want that streetscape to look. So this is, these are, uh, the first three are are a series of plans that you have seen before. So this was option number one. You want to throw up option number two. These are all things that you've seen before. There we go. Option number two. So this one, um, we reconfigured the drives a little bit. Um, uh, we looked at the property lines a little bit more specifically and and, uh, so that that was option number two. Then we had option number three. There we go. That's when we put it all together and connected the dots. So that was option number three. Um, all of these options are possibilities. They're not certainties, um, but they are going to be used in the report just sort of to guide um, the, uh, an image of what, um, we we might like to see in this particular area. We had also prepared a plan for School Street property, you know, the, um, the one that the, um, annex is on. That's the one. And on this one, we were looking at, um, combination of sort of keeping the existing uh, facility. Maybe we could expand it a little bit more to allow for potential expansion of the touchpoints, um, facility, uh, and just sort of how we might make that property, uh, either be something that could be developed by the town or future development, provide additional parking, just sort of a more efficient use of that particular property. So this one you have also seen before. So if we could go to, um, we have done two more, uh, Hundred Bridge Street, option number one. We'd looked at the, uh, Geisler's Plaza. Um, and based on conversations that we previously had, um, with the folks, the ownership group, um, just looking at how, uh, the corner in particular might be developed, um, with, uh, an additional pad site, they're willing to, um, uh, remove what was formerly the, I think it was a rite aid, um, on the, uh, left-hand side of the building. Um, and, uh, sort of take that amount of square footage, reconfigure parking and look at a pen, a potential, um, user out front on the corner. In this particular case, um, I had come up with a way to actually, um, provide some, uh, drive-through opportunity in the front. Um, this does ultimately, we're removing approximately nine thousand square feet of the building and putting back sixty-three hundred of that. So there is a net loss of building square footage. Um, and we are also, um, when I look at the parking spaces, uh, compared to the current regulations, the current parking, um, required is not, under the current regulations, the plaza doesn't meet those requirements. Um, uh, and under the the new configuration, it meets it even less. But the plaza, uh, you know, it's it's one of those things where the parking is, a lot of the parking is unused. Um, the lot of the parking is used over and over and over again, turns over a lot. Uh, so in this particular case, it it also made me realize that we are in a position where we need to rethink the parking numbers for Warehouse Point in general. The properties are all quite a bit smaller. The buildings are going to be smaller. Um, your the desire is to reuse the historic resources, so the net usability of any one of these particular buildings is less than it would be if you were just sort of tearing everything down and starting from scratch. So this was a first idea for the, uh, Geisler's Plaza, sort of address the corner, um, add a a new plaza out on the intersection, um, add some street trees and sort of reconfigure things. Any thoughts on this one?
So Terry, have we seen this one before?
No, you have not. This is brand new.
Okay.
I guess my thought is pre-COVID. I would have thought we wanted to encourage pedestrian traffic and walkability. And a drive-in doesn't really do that. But now that we live in this COVID world, maybe drive-ins are the answer.
Well, in this particular case, we do have sidewalks, you know, along the perimeter coming up to the center. Um, the, I also made it so that the parking can go towards the front of the building um, and stay out of the drive, the drive lane, you know, where you might stack. Um, but, um, you know, I mean, it's not a perfect world and I I was just basing it on, um, my experience with some other, uh, drive-through components. I think this building might be a little bit big, um, for the typical drive-through, uh, component, but it does have some outdoor space. It could, it's, you know, it's not, um, I wasn't targeting anything in particular. Any other thoughts?
I just move on, Terry. No one's.
Okay, so the only other I would note was on the east side of this, um, I did, I was trying to figure out a way to come up with more parking spaces here. Um, the most of the rear of the property is a wetland area, so you really couldn't expand out that way. So I thought on the east side, um, behind the funeral home, if they really, really wanted to, they could put in a retaining wall back there and um, put in a drive and some additional parking spaces. Uh, be a very expensive way to add parking. Um, but it it would be, um, possible. So just something, I I didn't really expect that to be um, something to consider, but I I didn't want to miss anything. Okay. So if there are no other comments on that one, I have one more, um, which is the, um, uh, Bridge Street West. So this one you have seen, but, um, you know, we were going back and forth on the the various different options. I had one option that actually had single-family homes in the back, but I think this is more consistent with what you were looking for. Um, this is just the final version after the of the various different, uh, times we've gone back and forth on this. It does show the, um, existing farmhouses up on the front and the creation of what's known as a build-two line along Bridge Street, which is basically your building. It's it's effectively a, um, a front building setback. front building setback, but the idea is that you must put your buildings along this particular line, so that it lines up and it maintains that streetscape. The idea is those existing farmhouses would be allowed to expand. Then we have shared parking and configuration. Then, in the back, you know, as you move towards the rear of the site, there's a couple of larger medical offices, two- to three-story buildings, possibly a very large restaurant, or another building that's on the left-hand side. And then to the rear, these are two-story units, residential units back here. It's about 120 residential units. And surrounded, pretty much surrounded by green space. The idea here was that we were kind of limiting this to approximately a 40% impervious cover, which gives you a pretty good amount of square footage. We're just going multiple stories instead of lying it all out flat. And you can get an adequate amount of parking. Like I said, I do think that the parking configurations, or the parking requirements for Warehouse Point should be different than the rest of the town using more of either a net square footage, or a reduced amount of square footage per parking space. So, that's, that's something that's going to come up later on this evening. So, any thoughts on this?
Terry, I apologize if you just mentioned it. So, I see the residential units in back. What was the, what was your vision on on those? They're going to have a separate access from the?
Two-story, you know, like maybe garden flats with a elevator center core. You know, you go in and then there's a corridor, so you have units on the backside and units on the front side, but it wouldn't necessarily, you wouldn't get direct access from the outside. You get access from the inside.
Okay. The height of those buildings, would you be able to see that from Bridge Street, two-story?
Um, not if we, if the two-to-three-story office buildings are in front of it.
Okay.
It would be, you know, it'd be sort of a nice secluded neighborhood. But, the idea is to have the pedestrian trails and/or bike trails connecting out to Bridge Street, down to Spring Street, and, you know, heading towards Main Street as well. It would mean going over the Blue Ditch in some fashion, which I haven't quite figured out, but if somebody was interested, I'm sure that they could figure that out.
If this were to come to fruition, it provides a great opportunity for an incubator for, for all the commercial space that you have in here. I mean, I could potentially see the businesses thrive with all the, all the people living in this area, additional people living in this area.
Yep. I think that's, you know, the conversations that we've had before, the idea that there be residential in the back became important, I think.
And there was no intention of having vehicular access via Maple Street or Spring Street?
No. The, the slope is significant. The impact that it would have by disturbing the trees along the Blue Ditch, from a stormwater perspective, got to be too onerous.
Okay.
So, the only entrance in Yeegress would be off of Bridge Street?
Correct. I mean, the idea would be, could come off of Gardner, you know, as a, for potentially a traffic light, and then later on, you know, as you're going towards 91, that, that entrance there could, would be far enough that if it had to have a traffic light, it could do it, but you already have the intersection of Gardner, which would make, you know, that would, that would make a reasonable intersection with the traffic light.
Anyone else have any comments on this one?
I do not.
Terry, I would move on.
Okay. So, those are the site plans that we had talked about throughout this whole thing, and just sort of putting an image to the discussion that we've been having. The, again, these are all just theories, and looking at, giving a chance to sort of see what we've been talking about, the various uses that we've been talking about, and an idea. They, it's not, it does not have the status of like, for example, form-based code, where you couldn't tell somebody to go do this, but it gives you an idea of, an applicant, an idea of what you're interested in. Okay. So, from here, what we need to do is talk about what this then translates into. Look at the, we can pull up the proposed Warehouse Point regulations. So, this is, this is, I just posted this, so it's not something that you've had a chance to look at, but the idea would be to translate all this discussion, the land use maps, et cetera, into something that would be a form that you're used to seeing, which is a regulation. So, I just started putting the information together. We have, at this point, nine zones that we're showing on our zoning, our proposed zoning map. The riverfront and flood zone is the one that runs right against, across the, you know, right on the river. The R1 flood zone is the one that is along South Water Street on the east side. R2 is Dean Avenue, and then Pleasant Neighborhoods. The Bridge Street mixed-use zone is the commercial zone that we're talking about, going from the bridge up to the highway zone where the hotels are. The Main Street Historic Zone is basically wraps around Main Street from, it's all the historic houses and the library, those uses along Main Street. The Main Street Commercial Zone is the industrial, the box factory, the police station, and that core that goes from Main Street to Dean. Then, the Commercial Zone is basically the properties behind the farmhouses up at the top on what that property I was calling Bridge Street West, as well as the children's home. The Highway Zone are, is the property from the hotel and auto zone towards Route 91, and then the Commercial Recreation is basically the soccer complex properties. So, this is for you, for your consideration. This starts, starts to talk, just like you're used to, in terms of what the permitted uses are, if we can scroll down this next page. And then, I started to put in as permitted use versus special use permit uses, the various different uses that we've been talking about, and just sort of throwing it out onto a table, so you can start to see what that might look like. Next page, please. Those are the notes associated with that. Then, I started working on the bulk requirements. This gets a little tricky, because some of the bulk requirements that you might want to do, if we had properties that were aggregated, are very different than when you want to, when you have to consider it on a property-by-property basis. So, I will follow up on this for our next meeting. Scroll one more time. Down to the last page, please. So, this is the one that is, makes this study different, which is, we've been doing all of this, and we've been tying it back into stormwater, and the evaluation of stormwater now, you know, what the existing conditions are. We've evaluated the stormwater based on the existing zoning, and we've evaluated the stormwater, what could be if we used a series of different scenarios, which have been part of our discussion, in terms of, how do I translate all the things that we want to do, those images from those site plans, and the various different graphics that we have produced into something that is usable for the future, and is going to potentially, it won't make the situation better, but we're trying not to make it worse. So, one of the things that happens in this regulation is that we're tying each of these zones into specific allowed impervious surface, and that is not different than what your regulations currently say, because they all do have an allowed impervious surface. We're simply bringing the point a little bit closer to home by showing what the allowed impervious surface amount would be, and then what you would need to do if you wanted more than that through a special use permit, and the stormwater requirements that you would need to do by providing water quality volume, by providing a certain percentage as infiltration, so that that is something that will hopefully translate into not a better situation in the Blue Ditch, but something that isn't going to cause more harm. Now, every project, you know, we all know that zoning, you can say all these things, and you can put down 40% impervious surface, and it's very rare that you actually meet those maximums in terms of what's allowed. In this particular case, however, I think especially the Bridge Street area, I think whatever maximum impervious surface that we would allow in that area is probably what you're going to get. And that is something that is most likely to occur in that particular corridor. So, we will, we should probably anticipate that that impervious surface is likely to actually occur. So, that's, this will give you a chance, it is posted up on the OneDrive, so get a chance to look at it, and I will follow up with those, filling out the bulk tables, and we'll be able to discuss this at more length at the next meeting.
Can you go back to the first page of this, this document?
Yep.
So, this is not à la carte. This is all or none, at this point. The commission can't elect to adopt, let's take for example Warehouse Point Highway Zone and do nothing else.
Ah, you can do whatever you wish.
Well, it's not, well, I guess that's true, but I guess it doesn't really make a lot of sense, because, I mean, it, I think you'd be making the decision at a vacuum. This is a package that we're evaluating the whole district, Warehouse Point.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, you could theoretically not do, you know, you, you could leave the R1 zone, which you currently have for Dean Avenue, but every lot is non-conforming, based on your current regulations.
Can you think of any reason why a current property owner would oppose such a, a zone change?
I can think of two reasons. One, in some cases, we are not, we're actually decreasing the overall impervious surface that there are allowed. Theoretically, you could, some properties are now going to be required to do additional stormwater improvements, which they might have been required to do under an application, but under this system, you are required to do it. This is, it says it right up front. It's not a, not subject to interpretation. The only other thing that I can think of is the discussion that we need to have next, which is that there are some properties that could argue that anything that we do is going to damage their property. If we can pull up the comparison chart, that would be great. So, this is.
Can you all see that, or does it need to get, you want me to zoom?
You can make it a little bit zoomier. That'd be good. Either way. Yeah, you can slide it up, so we don't, we don't need the title. Get the whole thing in place. There we go. That's good. So, what this does is, this is a summary of the stormwater calculations that have occurred for this project. In the, each of these points, the Bridge Street Pond, that represents the area that floods from Bridge Street back behind Geisler's. The Spring Street Pond is the land between Spring Street and Bridge Street, okay, that collects water, goes through the culvert under Spring Street, and then goes to the Holcombe Terrace Pond, which is between Springs, Spring and Holcombe Terrace. Then, the water goes through another pipe under Holcombe, and it goes behind, down to Main Street, and the Main Street Pond is the area from Main Street to Holcombe, and then the I-91 Pond is from Main Street to the culvert that goes underneath 91. The stormwater calculations, we were able to, although it should be considered proportional, because we're using the state GIS information, we're able to calculate a water level in those areas based on the various different storm events. So, under existing condition, the Bridge Street Pond reaches a level of 36.71 feet in a one-year storm, 37.23 feet in a two-year storm, and in the 25-year storm, it reaches a level of 38.36 feet. So, it's almost, between the one-year storm and the 25-year storm, it's, it's, it's about a foot and a half of water that collects, okay? When we look at that and we compare that to the existing zoning, okay, the existing zoning within that area assumes pretty much nothing's ever going to happen. All the, all the properties are existing non-conforming. There's not a lot of additional room within the zoning regulations, for example, Geisler's Plaza to expand. So, you're not going to have, under the existing zoning, you don't have a lot of change that occurs. It's approximately an inch or less between the, it's an inch in the one-year storm, and less than that in the 25-year storm. When we look at our two scenarios, the, you can see that we're starting to consider the addition of additional impervious surface. So, under the existing zoning, you might have as much as 2.9 feet additional, 2.9 acres of impervious surface, but in our, our current design ideas in scenario five and six, you could have as much as six additional acres of impervious surface. And so, you can see that the addition of that impervious surface adds a little bit more to the ponded area in each one of these scenarios. So, under scenario five, which considers, like I said, an additional six acres of disturbance, you're going to have as much as three inches higher in the one-year storm, but then it goes back down and is more typical in the 25-year storm, but it would have an immediate impact, that, that increased impervious surface would have an immediate impact at the, especially during the one, one and two-year storms. You can see some similar, as we go through each of the subsequent parts of this system. So, in the Spring Street Pond, we have, under the existing zoning, we go up 0.02 feet in the one-year storm, and almost as much as a half a foot in the 25-year storm. Our scenarios are radically different in their response. So, in scenario number five, you have a much less increase in the one-year storm, but it then, it peaks out in the two-year storm, and then it levels off again significantly in the, it, it's much more noticeable in the 25-year storm, similar to the existing zoning. So, that addition of approximately three acres of impervious surface does have a potential impact. It ends up that one of our scenarios actually is less than the existing zoning, and that made me start to think that what we should really be focused on is finding a way to provide for additional development, but not increase our potential impact beyond what the current existing zoning is. And so, we've started looking at how we make that happen, because we want to have additional development, but I think what we're talking about is dealing with, making sure that But I think what we're talking about is dealing with, making sure that the water quality volume on each site is addressed. Providing for infiltration, providing for pervious, using pervious materials rather than impervious materials. And getting credit for that in the drainage calculations and a, a number of different scenarios and recommendations. Any questions so far? Does it make sense that our goal should be to try to minimize any additional impacts above the existing zoning?
I thought that was our goal right from the onset of this, of the, of this study. So I, I, I would, I would say yes.
Because I, I think your question that you asked me, Joe, before about, you know, why people might object to this is. That would be one of the things that they would be concerned about, especially the property owners who experience this water gathering on their property. So that is, that conclusion is what is starting to drive some of the numbers in the zoning regulations. So some of our scenarios, we have found that, you know, we really need to stick to that forty percent impervious surface up in the commercial zones. To be able to offset what we're doing in along Bridge Street. We also sort of had a wild idea this week is, well, you know, it would really be good. If we could get DOT to extend catch basins on Bridge Street and take all the Bridge Street water directly to the river. I don't know how feasible that is, but that would certainly considerably reduce the amount of drainage that was running to the blue ditch.
Well, it's either that, or you have to make the blue ditch get rid of all of the water faster. And that's going to take eminent domain or a culvert. Or something along those lines, otherwise really haven't changed anything.
Well, we did run one scenario where we improved, we took, the town has on record some plans to improve the culverts at Spring Street and at Holcomb Terrace. And we did run a drainage calculation scenario where those are improved and it does do a nice job. But what it does is it sends the water through faster, but it ultimately then all settles and. Gets deeper down at the wastewater treatment plant. So it doesn't, you know, we can push it through up to a certain point, but then you're talking about. In either enlarging the culverts under ninety-one and putting some sort of gate on a, a system on top of that. Or just living with the fact that at least down on the, at the Little League fields, it's town property and so it's not private property. But there is a, there's a interesting balancing act that we are trying to do here.
Well, if you want to develop up off of the Bridge Street end. You know, water goes downhill and it's just not going any other way.
Would it be far fetched?
River comes up, it's, it's going to back up regardless of what you do.
Right, that's a different scenario. Okay, the, when the river comes up, there's not, this does not even take that into consideration. This is assuming that the river is running and we're trying to get the Bridge Street, the, the blue ditch water out as quick as we can.
Is it far fetched to think that a developer, as part of his off-site improvements, could improve the drainage system on Bridge Street?
I, I think they might do it up to a certain point, but I suspect that because the state of Connecticut owns the land. Especially on the north side of the bridge. The, I think we're going to need DOT help to get the catch basin system, let's say, from the river up to North Main Street. The, it would not be difficult to add some pipes and some catch basins. Up the rest of the way, you know, up the hill on Bridge Street. But trying to get to the river from Main Street, there's so many different property owners, I, I think that's going to have to be DOT.
So we need a friend in the legislature.
But that would have a significant impact on the downstream properties.
Is there any incentive to pursue that now? Or any reason to pursue that now? Money was not an object.
Well, if, if money was not an object, then I would say absolutely, because what that does is it then. Provides, like for example, seventy-five percent impervious along Bridge Street, who cares? It might as well be a hundred percent impervious. You would just have people put their water quality volume and some. Hydrodynamic separators in there to provide stormwater quality improvements. And then hook into the DOT system and get the water out of there. So it would have a significant impact on the potential for development along that section of Warehouse Point.
But that's not the reality we face now. I mean, basically the study is based on the conditions that we have to live with now. And that's, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Joe, would you mind if I ask a question along that same line?
Go right ahead, Alan.
And you guys may have touched on this in a meeting that I missed recently, or maybe not, but. Were you aware that the, the town had to replace the culvert crossing South Water Street? And it was sleeved, it was, I guess it was failing, it was crumbling, the road was crumbling and everything. So the, you know, it's now, what was a seventy-two inch culvert is now, I think, a fifty-six or maybe a sixty. Flow line is the same, I believe. Does that affect any of these calculations?
Not, not particularly because we're, we're, our starting point is the ninety-one culvert. You're, you're talking about the one that goes from just past the bridge. That goes underneath South Water Street, that takes the whole blue ditch, both, both branches and sends it out to the, the river.
Yep.
Okay. So, so yeah, see, our, our design point really is back at the ninety-one culvert. So it should, I, the, the, my understanding that the replacement of that culvert was to help it flow more. Is that, is that correct?
The, the, it was replaced because the road was potentially going to cave in. The, the existing seventy-two inch culvert was collapsing.
I see.
It was an emergency replacement and unfortunately we couldn't really work in any other type of. I had mentioned when it went for wetlands, your study and the desire to tilt that a different way or whatever. And unfortunately, we're not be, we're not able to take any of those design considerations in. But now a new head wall is there and a smaller diameter pipe, but the flow line I believe is the same or, you know, effectively the same.
Well, I do recall that at least part of the seventy-two inch pipe was significantly silted in. So it wasn't, it wasn't flowing quite the way anybody wanted it to in the first place. So I'm, I'm hoping that it won't have a significant impact, but from a calculation perspective, we didn't use that in the first place. I wondered what happened with that. Okay. All right, so, so any other questions on, on this meshing which is occurring between the stormwater calculations and the zoning? And it's, it's generally occurring in the impervious surf, surface calculations and the stormwater portion of the proposed regulations. So. Any other thoughts?
I have none at this point.
Tara, I, I just want to be clear on something, you know, that where you require as of right and special use permit. If an applicant wants to have different impervious coverage requirements, that's where those special use permit triggers. What actually triggers the need for special use permit on that chart that you had?
Okay, so right now it's got two different parts, different use, there's a few uses that are special use permits. Use, special use permit uses. And then the other part of that is the stormwater, if they want impervious coverage greater than the requirement. That, you know, that's, that's shown as allowed, permitted impervious coverage. They, they can go up to a certain level with certain specific criteria under a special use permit right there.
Okay.
Yep. And the, the, you know, what you have to do for it is express, the criteria for allowing that special permit to occur. Is attempting to be this, in the notes, I tried to indicate what that might be. It is subject to your interpretation, you know, or I'd love to get some feedback, this is the first time you've seen that. So that's, if you think that that's not going to work or it doesn't mean what. You know, when you write regulations, it doesn't always say what I think it's going to say, so it does require some back and forth.
So I guess that's our homework assignment for, for the next meeting.
Yep. Yes, that is. Okay. Anything else on this? Okay, moving on. One of the things that we do need to do is the final public participation. At our last meeting, we came up with a strategy to do that, which was a combination of mailed survey. A survey to be posted and. A Survey Monkey, you know, where you can link. I think we've got the logistics of getting. That to happen on the Facebook page and also on the town's website. So I put together this almost final draft on the survey. I know, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. It does fold, where's my camera, very nicely into a small mailable survey that people can send back to us. So hopefully we'll get whatever feedback that we are hoping to get. I didn't know if anybody had any comments, thought we should add some questions. Any thoughts?
I'll be honest with you, I didn't go review this as I probably should have. Is there still an opportunity before our next meeting to provide constructive criticism or input? Or are you looking for it before the next meeting?
I'd really love to get it before the next meeting.
Okay.
Because you'll, you'll see with my time schedule.
Okay.
We're going to, we'll be pushing things. I think I have just enough time if, if it does end up going to the next meeting. But it's going to be, it's going to be a little close.
So what I request, if anyone has any comments regarding that specific survey, just kindly sharing with Mike before the next meeting, Mike Tomato. Is that okay?
That would be perfect and then I'll, I'll make the changes and we can go from there specifically. I'm interested if you think, I haven't asked the specific question that you might be interested in getting comments on. Or anything like that. So it is, it has a series of, I use some of the graphic images inside of this, so people have something to look at. And, and that's, I think actually works out pretty well. Specifically, I use the Bridge Street intersection and then the graphic that shows the, raising the houses on South Water Street. And then asked a series of questions regarding stormwater. And then at the end, there's a series of, you know, comment to your heart's content questions at the end. Yeah, see, I think that actually worked out pretty well. So I look forward to your comments.
Hi Terry, this is, hi Terry, this is Frank. I, I looked at those questions and, and the photographs you have and I, I thought it was well done and there's nothing I can add.
So Tara, you indicated this is both electronic and mail-in options?
Yep.
For that survey? Okay.
Yeah, I'm, the idea was that we would mail it to all the property owners in Warehouse Point. You know, within our study area directly. And then because we're most interested in their comments, they can either do the mail and return. Or they could do Survey Monkey and that is basically identified in, you know, questions number one and two. Or questions one and. Six, you know, so, so that I can tell who's where, so.
And how long do you think it would take someone to fill out the survey? Five minutes, ten minutes?
Probably, probably close to, probably close to twenty minutes. Just, there's, it, it's much longer than I had hoped for, but I didn't see any other way to get around it.
Did, did you tell, is there any instructions or guidance that they're going to be getting to a survey that's twenty minutes long?
I can add that, that is, that is a normal thing to indicate how long.
Yeah, because some people get into it and they do it halfway and say, oh my goodness, I gotta do something else and they never finish it.
Yep. Yeah, well, the, the way this is set up is they could hit the done button anytime electronically.
Okay.
Here, what do you consider an acceptable return rate? How many connections?
Given, you know, if, if we could get fifty returns, that would be amazing.
Okay.
We have two hundred and seventy, I think, property owners that we're going to mail to. So if between the electronic and, I would love to get fifty from Warehouse Point. I would anticipate that on the, the Survey Monkey with Facebook and, and the town connections. We'll probably get another fifty or so non-Warehouse Point people hitting it. So, you know, I, I, it's, it's possible that we could get as many as two hundred and fifty hits on this.
But if you got people who all say, we're interested in moving to Warehouse Point, that would be good too.
Yes, yeah, and there are some questions that specifically say, you know, like for example, this image, you know, it says, would you live here?
Yeah, no, I like that kind of, what would it take to get you to want to live here, kind of?
And no polling frauds allowed here, you can't fill out fifty responses.
Well, our new Supreme Court Justice, Jason Lowit.
All right, well, if anybody has any comments on this, like, get, get to Mike, that'd be great. Okay, so the last piece which you already had pulled up, Mike, it was the, the schedule of what we're doing. So we have. All right, so this was the, the schedule that we came up with in a meeting with the DECD. To figure out all the pieces. So the, the final, if I work myself back, I've got a final report. That's going to include all the maps and the evaluation and a series of recommendations. That is due for December fifteenth. So in order to work our way back, we need to get the public participation so that I can do an evaluation of that to, to come in. The things that are still sort of in flux are the regulations. And I still have some streetscape cross-sections that I need to do, like for Bridge Street. Maybe School Street, maybe a couple of other places just as illustrations for how those might work. And then, like I said, we need to get the, the final report to Planning and Zoning, December eighteenth. With a hopefully meeting on January twelfth where you've had a chance to look at it. I can do edits and that you can accept the report in approval in the mid-January. So that's kind of where we're at. I'm not sure how we need to interface with the Board of Selectmen. And I'd be more than happy to do that at the same time. You just need to tell me how you would like to accomplish that.
I think it's always a good idea to get the, the governing board on, on the same page. I'm wondering, what is the legal requirement? Do we have the authority to approve the report where really the, the governing board in the town does?
Typically, you would accept the, the report, what you do with it after that. It'd be nice if the Board of Selectmen approved it. Again, they could simply accept it. It's just going to be recommendations, it'll be a draft zoning regulations. What you decide to do with it after that, you're going to have some work that needs to happen after that.
Okay.
Jason, did you have a different? Jason, did you have a different thought if you're still on?
I'm still on and, you know, I'm happy to put it on a Selectmen's meeting agenda if that's what the PCC wants us to do.
Joe, I'll defer to you.
I'm thinking that it's an appropriate action to have the Board of Selectmen weigh in.
Okay. Do you want to do that while we're still gathering public input? Or do you want to do that after you've had a chance to receive the report in the first place?
Probably have to receive the report.
Okay.
So just keep in mind that the Selectmen meet every first and third Thursday. So we're meeting in, in November on the 5th and 19th. And I don't know what that translates to into December yet, but I know you're on a tight timeframe. So whenever you need that on an agenda, just give me a week or so of notice.
It looks like based on this schedule, if you could put us on for, after the 18th. So maybe the, in January? That would be good. Of December, I meant, after the 18th of December.
Okay, that's no problem.
Okay.
Terry, is there going to be a, after the public meeting, a comment period? Or we're just going to have comments the day, the day of the event and disclose the public comments?
So, so no, the, the idea is I, I have two short presentations to get people kind of like, you know, background information and the Stormwater 101 presentation that I have done before to get everybody on board. We're going to record those like on a Zoom meeting with the, with the screen and everything. And then post those on Facebook and the link, the logistics of this are still in motion. And allow people to comment on those particular presentations. The, we would then grab all those comments. So those will be posted. The first one and then approximately a week and a half later, the second one will go up. And then we'll take all those comments and in our, on one of the meetings, I believe it's in the December meeting, we'll have an actual public presentation with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Take those comment, those final comments on that presentation. Have a discussion with respect to those, answering those comments. And put together the summary of what we received from the survey information. So, so that will be sort of pulling all the comments together.
Okay.
Any other questions? That's all I have at this point.
Thank you very much, Terry. I guess it's a very ambitious schedule, I'll have to say.
Just a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Yeah.
I know some unfortunate things have happened, things beyond your control. So it is what it is, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll make it happen and, and you know, just, I, I think DECD got a little bit of flex room, but not a whole lot. They, they have their own urgencies. And, and so I believe that that was what was reflected in our meeting with the DECD.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any final thoughts or questions for Terry?
Thank you, Terry. A lot of hard work and a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Am I hearing any other comments?
All right. So I will be seeing you at every meeting from now until Jan, all the way through January. So.
All right. Take care. Have a good night. Thank you.
You too.
Okay. Next up on our agenda, correspondence. Mike, did you have anything on this topic?
I don't have anything, anything that I want to share, but I guess now is the goodest time as any. I just wanted to quickly touch base with everybody and make sure that they are comfortable with the, the OneDrive folder format. It's just, it's, it's much easier on our end because we don't have to send hundreds of attachments. And, and when we link the agenda, it goes on the website. So I just want to make sure you're comfortable with that. If you hate it, we'll, we'll, we'll get rid of it. But other than that question, I don't have anything else for you.
Does anybody have any comment regarding the accessibility to the files? I use OneDrive every day professionally and I, I'm very used to it, but I'm just speaking from myself. How about anybody else?
Is this something that you anticipate we would be using?
No, it's just rather than, than emailing the separate attachments, the link that's on the agenda will provide you with access to all the documents. So we don't get caught up with file size issues with emails and making sure that, you know, folks have Microsoft Word to view a Word document and everything can be viewed directly. You don't need an account. So if you didn't catch it at the top of the agenda, there's a blue link. And if you hit that link, it will open up a folder online with all the documents that were referenced tonight.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that because I've been working in paper copies all along. So.
Yeah, and we still.
I didn't realize that there was an expectation that you went somewhere to find the documents.
So, so we will still absolutely provide the hard copies as we would. It's just rather than the multiple attachments, at the top of the agenda, it says to access meeting materials, click the link below. And if you click that link, it will provide you with all those that would have gone as separate attachments via email. It's just trying to cut down on, on some of the inbox clutter. Because if it's anything like anybody else, we're probably buried with emails. So, but the, the hard copies will still be, we're not going to change that part.
I just find with one computer and not knowing how to split my screen or do anything, that the paper copies are much easier to look at.
Yeah, it can be hard to manage, especially with a large site and the scale of the plans and that type of thing.
So Mike.
Computer screen.
So one thing I noticed under the application for the Silverman Group, just before the meet, I don't know, a couple hours before the meeting, I obviously I went back to the site. It looks like Tim Kuhn had posted some new information. Is it possible that applicants post information on the OneDrive or it has to come from town staff? You're on mute if you're trying to speak.
Well, I was talking to myself, but now I'm talking to you. So if you see, yeah, if, I mean, I, when I look at the memo here or that, that application, I see that Amanda posted everything except for the my memo, which I think I uploaded. So I don't see anything with Tim's specific name.
I thought I saw his response to your memo.
Yeah.
There was a new document.
Yeah, so that was, was posted by Amanda, but it was written by Tim. So if you look, what I, I can see what's modified by and the modification will tell you who posted it. But it was a Tim Kuhn memo. So perhaps you're looking at author.
Okay.
Because he drafted it. So, yeah, it's, it's the, the permissions of these folders are controlled by the, the person who sets them up, which in this case is, is me or Amanda.
So I guess the, the point I'm trying to make is I guess that each, each one of us has to do some due diligence. Go, go to the OneDrive folder to make sure no information has been put out there that we don't already have. Let's say that you make arrangements, you have paper copies and some supplemental information is provided. You may not have a hard copy of it because you ran out of time to get a hard copy, but it is posted on OneDrive.
Yeah, and we're, and we, my goal is not to make this more complicated so that you have to look in 10 different places. We, we, we're not, you know, I don't want to be posting things here so that if you, if the folks that get hard copies are missing out. So the goal for us is everything that goes out with the packet will go into the OneDrive and the hard copies and everything goes out as it should. Just trying to cut down on attachments and also when we post the agenda, not having to individually upload these files to the website is, is a, is a significant reduction on our time. And also not having to have the, these files stored and hosted on the website. I mean, the Silverman plan is 13 meg. So those things, particularly when we start dealing with the Warehouse Point videos and surveys, those are going to be large files and, and so trying to make sure that we don't run into compatibility issues. So, yeah, I'm not trying to make this more work from the sense of having to look 100 different places. So we will continue to communicate as we have with the, you know, agenda packets going out on the same dates and that type of thing.
Well, one of the things I do like about it, having that link on the, on the agenda, it's very transparent to the public regarding the documents that we're all working from. There's, not that we have any secrets because that's not the case, but everyone has full accessibility to these documents. Rather than what part of the website is it on, it hasn't been posted, those type of things. It just seems to be in a one convenient spot. And I, I like that.
Joe, your point that when we pick up the packets and by the time we get to the meeting, more documents have been generated, we don't see them from the paper packet. So we will have to, in addition to the paper packets, check that to see the new additions.
Okay. Mike, last time we had a conversation regarding the permit extension for the Charbonneau pit. Did you have any opportunity to look into that? Or that's for a discussion for another meeting?
Yeah, so it's on, it's in progress. I started looking through some of it. If I had to describe the last three weeks in, in the Land Use Office, I think I'd use the word fire drill. So we're, we're working on a bunch of other things and Ruth and I are slowly chewing through some of the outstanding zoning issues that are somewhat complex and time sensitive. So.
Not a problem. So I mean, it's, it's, it's on your plate.
Yeah.
I'll go with that.
And, 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 you know, with Ruth working through those things, I'm sort of suggested to her that we, as long as you guys are comfortable, move her to a first meeting of the month report. It gives her time to actually make progress on these things rather than showing up every two weeks and talking about things that haven't really changed. And allows her to kind of manage her time a little bit better as she's, she's still trying to learn. And, and so I suspect there will be, there will be some new things that she'll report to you at that next meeting, which may, may kind of shed some light on the time we've been spending. But yeah, we're, we're working through those things and we'll get you something ASAP.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a comment on the Charbonneau pit or not?
Yeah, I, I don't see why not.
To give you a little bit of an example, last Saturday, okay, there were 42 bikes and ATVs that went down the tracks to the Charbonneau pit. And on two different nights last week, there were people down there at one o'clock in the morning on ATVs and motorbikes. So there's not been a lot of effort into cleaning that situation up.
Okay.
Richard, do you suggest that perhaps the police should be more diligent? Is that your suggestion?
I, I would think it's a matter, it's, it's three people who should be more diligent. It should be the state of Connecticut since they own the railroad, rail line. It should, it should be the police department because quite frankly, you know, property owners along the rail line are not happy about this at all, and I'm not the only one. And third, the owner of the pit is obviously not doing what he could or should be doing to, to stop that.
Dick, are they going into the pit or just down the railroad tracks?
Oh, no, they're going in the pit.
Because just driving on the street, I see them coming down the railroad tracks all the time, even where you don't have to stop. If you don't stop at the tracks, you could hit somebody.
Yeah. Oh, no, that's very true. I mean, they could care less about you.
Right. They just drive right in front of you.
Okay, well, I guess we'll have a lot to talk about when, when Mike's ready to inform us what, what the next steps might be on this one.
Yeah, we just held back because I wanted you guys to kind of focus on Warehouse Point and get, figure out how that was going to land. And now that I kind of see the schedule and what we need to do, I can start feathering in some of the other stuff.
So on the enforcement of the ATV riders, one thing that would be particularly helpful is if, when people see them out there or more accurately, when people see them staging, if they could report that into the police department. We actually had an officer do a pursuit of one of those ATV guys down the tracks two weekends ago, three weekends ago, right up until it became too dangerous for the, the officer to do that. But if we can figure out where they're unloading their, their trailers and then hopping on the tracks, that's very helpful. They had been using the elementary school, but have gotten away from that. And, and I think the weekend Dick was talking about, I did come across them as they were packing up, staging at One Stop on Depot Street. But if they're in East Windsor and they're offloading vehicles for illegal purposes, we can do something about that if we know about it.
I, my comment would be, I, I had a little concern with some traffic and I reported it to the police department. And they have a very, very compliant and, and, you know, sending an officer here. As a matter of fact, that officer on the track was just on the street from me down here on Crisick Road, I believe.
And Frank, the officer who was patrolling out there today was the chief of police on his way home.
Good, good man.
Jason, they come up Ellsworth Road, the dirt bikes. And don't know if they are going down Ry Street to the right or to the left. I don't know which way they go at the corner.
Well, I can report that to the, the chief of police, but it's particularly important to have that information reported in when it's happening so they can catch them. Because they don't always do it in the same places. They're, they're pretty creative about that. Sometimes they'll offload on Dempsey Road, sometimes they'll offload the elementary school parking lot. Sometimes it's at One Stop, sometimes it's by Frank's house at the town line. Sometimes it's in Massachusetts. But if we can actually find the vehicles that they're using to move the vehicles, that's something that can be enforced.
But some of them are just dirt bikes coming on the street.
Jason, I recall there was a, some town in Connecticut, it might've been Hartford, they were experiencing a lot of ATVs and dirt bikes riding on the public roads. And I, if I'm not mistaken, the municipality in a, may, created an ordinance such that it had some fines. And I think the fines were penalties for such that they confiscated their, their equipment. And I don't know if this is something that maybe the Board of Selectmen may wish to consider. Maybe it's something already on the books, you know, maybe those, maybe that's drastic, but maybe we're, we've reached those, that time now.
No, that's a great point, Joe. And knowing that, I can at least reach out through CCM and see if I can get a copy of wherever municipality has that ordinance.
I think it's Hartford because I think I read in the paper that they, they were storing them at a certain location and the people came back in and stole the bikes from the police department.
In Hartford, they squished the dirt bikes, but a lot of them are coming from South Windsor and East Hartford. But I've, I've talked to people who are a similar age, this is Tim, that know people that ride up the railroad tracks and they're just riding from locations in South Windsor. A lot of them. But I think when I worked for the state, the best way that it worked to catch people was to go out there on quads and then just call people at the entrances. But I don't think the cops want to coordinate that anymore.
Okay, why, why don't we move on? We could have a very healthy continuing dialogue regarding the illegal activity going on regarding the pit and then the ATVs. Next up is our business meeting, election of officers. As you know, that there's going to be a, there's going to be a, a position available. So we're going to have to nominate someone for vice chair. So historically, or it just seems to be the last couple of years, we've been nominating a slate and voting on a slate. I don't think that's really appropriate here because the slate is going to be changing because the vice chair is going to change. So I'm going to go through each one of the offices. I'll start at chairman first and I'll go ask for nominations. I'll start at chairman first and I'll go ask for nominations, close the nominations for each one of the offices. Then at the very end, I'll, I'll ask for a motion and perhaps we can group them all in together at the same time. So are there any nominations for chairman?
Joe, may I ask a question?
Sure can.
Uh, there's an, obviously, and, and for the vice chair position open. Is there anyone on the board now who would like to express the desire to take that position?
Certainly, I, we can throw that out there. Does anyone have a desire for the vice chair? Well, the thing is, if, if you're offered and someone nominates you, you can, you, you can turn down the nomination. You just.
But it would, it would expedite the, the whole process if someone was interested and we all agree that would, person would be the person to do it. I am, I am not interested.
So it's, it's, it's going to be one of three people. So would it have to be Jim, Mike, or Tim?
I nominate Mike Kowalski.
I will second that nomination.
Shouldn't we fill Dick's position first?
Yeah, so. Let, getting back to Frank's point, Mike, if, if, if you, if someone nominates you for vice chair, is that something that you might be in, interested in? Or Jim, or Tim, anybody?
I did it for a couple of years. I think Mike stick a crack at it.
I don't think I'm a fluent enough speaker.
What's that, Tim?
I don't think I'm good enough with words to be vice chair in case I had to run the meeting.
All right, are the nominations, has, I've, have the nomination started or what are we doing?
No, 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 no. Frank, I was entertaining your idea that, that didn't, didn't turn out so great. So I'm going to go back to my plan. So are there any nominations for chairman?
I'll nominate Joel Lett for chairman.
Are there any other nominations for chairman?
No, sir.
Okay, nominations are closed for chairman. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Mike Kowalski.
I also nominate Mike Kowalski.
And I second that.
I third it.
Nominations are closed for vice chair. Mike, are you going to accept the vice chair if, uh, are, are you going to accept the nomination? You're not, you're not obligated to, I'm just.
My, my serious concern is, is having available time to put into it. Um, especially going into this part of the year, I am, I am as busy as you can get. So, in, in this, again, in the scenario of having to cover for you, it would be a monumental task for me in, in the next couple of months.
We'll get through that.
But they're not, but they're not, you know, the, the, the position goes more than the next couple of months.
I understand that, but I, I mean, not knowing, you know, Joe's schedule, I, I don't know, you know, they're, they're very well, maybe December that I may not be able to make meetings, you know, how, how my business gets in, in the month of December.
Well, one thing I can predict, Mike, I don't have any business trips coming up that I'm believing the state, so that, that, that's a given.
No, no, no planned vacations either?
Nope, nope.
So you're declining.
I'll take it.
Come on.
Yeah. All right, I'll accept the nomination.
All right.
All right. Any nominations for secretary?
I nominate Tim.
Are there any other nominations for secretary?
Now, is Ann, Ann still, she's not a full-time member yet, right?
No, not at this time. Yeah, according to our bylaws, you have to be a regular member to, to vote. Yeah.
Is she, is Ann going to step up to be a full-time member?
I, I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't know.
I, I, I would suggest that she does, I really do.
Well, it's outside of our control. The Board of Selectmen have the final say in all appointments to boards.
Her application will be on our agenda on the fifth.
Thank you, Jason.
So that's why I was saying, Mike, you know, uh, I, I know you reluctantly agreed, you know, we could leave a office available until such time we had additional members come, come on the board. Come on board.
You know, I, personally, I think that might be in the better interest of the commission. I, I mean, I, I feel a sense of obligation. I, I don't want to say no, but I think the, the board may be better served with somebody who could devote, devote more time to it.
Well, Mike, I, I cannot put words in your mouth either. Do you want to accept the nomination or you want to turn down the nomination? And we can move forward from there.
Um, no, I'm, I'm going to turn it down.
Okay, and there were no other nominations for vice chair, so that, so that office will be vacant. Okay, so, um, I'll entertain a motion for the, uh, for the chairman, which is myself. Uh, and a nom, and a motion for the secretary, which is Tim Moore. So someone want to offer a motion for those two offices?
I make a motion that we vote for the slate of Joe Lett as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Tim Moore as secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
There's a motion. Uh, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second, Frank.
Uh, Frank, I can't have, you have to be a regular member to a second emotion.
I thought I was a voting member tonight. I understand.
I'll, I'll second it.
Mike, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. That's approved. Okay, so that's taken care of. So there is a vacant office and I guess when the Board of Selectmen appoints, uh, our replacement, whoever, whoever that may be, uh, well, we'll, we'll take up the issue then. Uh, is there any other business for the go-to-the-order for tonight?
No. I have nothing, Joe.
Okay, Mike, any last com- Mike Tomato, any last comments?
Nothing on my end, just a reminder that if you have comments on the survey, shoot them over to me and I'll coordinate with Terry so we can prep for distribution.
Okay, thank you. And Dick, one last time, it's been an honor serving with you and, uh, I hope to see you around town.
It has been, it's, it's been a privilege serving on this board. Uh, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Enjoy your.
All COVID-free, right?
All COVID-free, absolutely.
Uh, Tampa Bay one, Dodgers zero.
So I guess there's a game seven, right?
No, they're, I don't know what inning they're in, but they're only.
Oh, okay. All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Hey, Mike, that's why you should be vice.
Wow. I got ahead of myself. Is there a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry.
I make, I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. Bye.